Uh, we're gonna start tonight's Bible study and review of Luke chapters five and six. Brother Lyndon's going to open us up in prayer. Brother Lyndon, please.
Okay, uh, Heavenly Father, we're so thankful that you have gathered us together to listen to the words of your son, Yahshua. Please shower us with your words. Let us be enveloped in your presence, so we are safe and secure. Your words give us hope, love, and faith. May this Bible study bless each and every one of us. For we are just mere, we are just merely little children, hungering and thirsting and panting for you. And we pray that you will prepare us to receive your son, our true reward, our true cistern of water. So again, blessed be each and every single individual here. Let them hear what the Spirit comes says to the churches, and may they be awakened and be liberated when they hear the words of your mouth. For it is written, man does not live on bread alone, but by every word that comes out of the mouth of the Lord. We say this with sure confidence, because you are our Abba. Abba, again, we say this in your name, in the name of your son, in the name of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Okay, beloved brethren, good evening and welcome again to tonight's Bible study. And we're going to bless our heavenly Father, well, we're gonna ask our heavenly Father to bless us as we are joining in tonight's study to bring these spiritual truths into our lives in order to help us to grow, to be better servants of the Father, to be better fishes of men, as we were once fished for and sele- and successfully caught. Now we're attempting to fish for the men and women for our Father's kingdom in order that there will be more sons and daughters coming home to glory. Brother Lyndon, just really quick, can you hear me well, Brother Lyndon?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Okay, beloved brethren, just wanna make um, a repeated mention. Please understand that all the works of the flesh will one day cease. Beloved brethren, again, please understand that all the works of the flesh will one day come to an end. Only that which is devoted to the Father, the Son, and to the Holy Spirit will exist for all of eternity. Everything that is done in the flesh will one day have its demise. So with that in mind, beloved brethren, with that in mind, we should make it our earnest, we should make it our business to do what thus say of the Lord daily. We just came out of the book of Leviticus, and Aaron, the high priest, one of his responsibilities was to offer up a sacrifice of offering daily. Beloved brethren, remember, we are now priests in Jesus Christ. So daily, we are to offer up sacrifices and offerings of praise to our Father in heaven. David said, seven times a day I praise thee. Daniel was found to be praying to God three times a day. So beloved brethren, it would behoove us to daily to be engaged in what thus say of the Lord, not looking for any letup, not looking for any excuse, and just doing everything that we can to bless our heavenly Father and to serve. Beloved brethren, just last week, as we went over chapter four, we saw that our Lord Jesus Christ was tempted by the devil. And that literally leaped off the pages of scripture at me because of a truth even just as recent as we will be getting the phone calls for tonight's study. Satan has been taking Brother Lyndon and I both through the wringer, the car wash. He filled the baby's bathtub with water, threw us and it out, grabbed the kitchen sink, hurled it at us, clubbed us, dragged us, slammed us up against the wall. And he was very reluctant to turn us loose, beloved brethren. So we have to understand that as our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ went through these trials, so do and so will we. Please understand that the Christian journey is not an easy one. It's an extremely rewarding one because the dividends, the payouts, the returns that we're gonna get from being Christians will last for all of eternity. Remember, beloved brethren, and we have here tonight with us our beloved brothers and sisters from Pakistan, from halfway around the world, right now, as it's nine PM for us, it's six and five and seven in the morning for them. So they're up early, engaging and enjoying in these Bible studies so that they can bless the Lord and so that the Lord can turn and bless them. Heavenly Father, this is ser- this, excuse me, beloved brethren, and I'm saying to my Father, this is heavy, this is serious, and this is real. Because our beloved ones in Pakistan, as well as in parts of China, Africa, parts of Europe and Asia, these beloved ones are being persecuted for their faith. We here in America, we, they're just really taken too much advantage of. But our ones are suffering for what thus said. So we should really take that into consideration, take that into account, and really be more earnest in our relationship, our studies, and our walk with the Lord Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, as we prepare to move into our review of Leviticus, of Luke chapter five, verse one, and Luke the five verses follows. It passed that as the people pressed upon Jesus to hear the word of God, he stood much ships standing by the lake, but the fishermen were going out of them and were washing their nets. And he entered into one of the ships, which was Simon's, and prayed him that it would thrust out a little from the land, and he sat down and taught the people out of the ship. Beloved brethren, in verses one through three of the, of Luke chapter five, we have something that's of a contrast of today. The people of our Lord's day, listen to what it says once again in verse one. They pressed upon our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ to hear the word of God. Beloved brethren, unfortunately, we do not have such fervor today. They are not breaking down the doors, they are not bursting through the walls, they are not telling, tearing through the televisions or through their phones to hear the word of God. As a matter of fact, even here in our free world of America, they are trying to silence. They are attempting to silence the gospel. Listen to these truths that are found in Old Testament writing of Psalms. But listen to these beautiful words of truth that was spoken of thousands of years ago, but we're here experiencing it in June of twenty twenty-four. Psalms two, verses one through three. Why do the heathen rage and the people imagine a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves, and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointing, saying, let us break their bands asunder and cast away their cords from. Beloved brethren, we have that going on right now. They are attempting to silence the gospel. They are attempting to, to, they've already removed prayer from school, bibles from the public square. So we see, beloved brethren, that which was going on in David's day, we are experiencing here today. And it doesn't break my heart, it crushes my soul to know that we are experiencing this. Because Psalms one nineteen helps us to appreciate, how will a young man cleanse his way by taking heed thereto according to God's word? That is the one and singular only way that we will be successful in making it through this Satan-filled, demon-encrusted world by taking heed, close heed, and strict heed to God's word. Second Timothy chapter four, verses three and four reads as follows. For the time will come when they will not endure sore doc- endure sound doctrine, but after their own lusts shall they heap to themselves teachers having itching ears, and they shall turn away their ears from the truth and shall be turned unto fables. Beloved brethren, as the apostle Paul was led by the Holy Spirit to write Second Timothy chapter four, we are experiencing that now. Beloved brethren, and regardless if they do not want to hear the word, we have this urgency to get out God's word. We have to tear through the, 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 the indifferences that are about us, the hatred that is around us, and we must give out God's word. We have to exercise wisdom. Remember, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said, be wise as serpents, yet harmless as doves. So in that, we have to do this, and we still have to give out God's word. Beloved brethren, verse four of Luke chapter five says, now when Jesus left speaking, he said unto Simon, Simon, launch out into the deep and let your nets down for a draw. And Simon answering said unto him, master, we have toiled all the night and have taken nothing. Nevertheless, at thy word, I will let down the net. And when they had done this, they enclosed a great multitude of fishes, and their net broke. And they beckoned, verse seven, unto their partners, which were in the other ship, that they should come and help them. And they came and filled both the ships, so that they began to safety. Verse eight, when Simon Peter saw it, he fell at his knees, fell at Jesus' knees, saying, depart from me, Lord, for I am a sinful man. Beloved brethren, in these paragraphs that we've, these verses that we've read, understand that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is very, very practical. And what I mean by that is, not only is the urgency of us getting out his word of dire need and of stringent importance, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ takes time out to engage in our secular activities. Listen to what he said to Peter again. He said, launch your net out into the deep and drop it, that it may be able to gather in the fish. So what our Lord is, uh, what is being presented here by Luke in the words of our Lord and the presence of our Lord is that Jesus takes an interest even in our secular activities. Yes, he does. And he's imitating his Father. Now remember, when Jacob was in the employ of Laban, this is found in Genesis, chapter twenty-three, when Laban was in the employ, when Jacob was in the employ of Laban, he spoke to God about the things that was going on, the, 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 the trickiness and the underhandedness that Laban was performing concerning Jacob's wages, and he attempted to cheat and cheat and cheat him again. Forgive me, dear beloved, that's actually Genesis chapter thirty-one, verses seven and eight. Once again, Genesis chapter thirty-one, verses seven and eight reads as follows, showing that God had an interest in Jacob's occupation. Jesus had an interest in Simon's occupation as a fisherman. You have to understand that God and Jesus both, and the Holy Spirit takes an interest in our occup- occupation, whether we're working at the bank, uh, for MTA, homemakers, um, working on the railroad, at Walmarts, uh, Kefu, wherever we may be employed, God has an interest in that. Listen to Genesis chapters six, uh, Genesis chapter thirty-one, verses seven and eight. Once again, Genesis chapter thirty-one, verses seven and eight reads as follows. And this is Jacob speaking to Rachel about the underhandedness and trickiness that Laban was doing to Jacob concerning his wages. And your father hath deceived me and changed my wages ten times, but God did not allow him to hurt me. If he said thus the speckled shall be thy wages, then all the cattle bear speckled, and if he said thus the ring-straight shall be thy hire, then bear all the cattle ring-straight. Beloved brethren, this is showing that Laban was trying to say, uh, for example, alright, Jacob, if you work for me ten hours, I'll give you thirty dollars paid for ten hours' work. I'll give you thirty hours' pay for ten hours' worth of work. Jacob did the ten hours, then Laban said, oh, oh, well, I really meant, if you work fifteen and a half hours, then I'll give you twenty dollars an hour pay. So this is the trickiness that Laban was trying to pull on Jacob. But Jacob went to God concerning this, and God made sure that Laban paid Jacob thirty hours of pay for ten hours of work. So beloved brethren, do not stress yourself that when we go and put in a hard days of honest work, that the, our bosses, our employees will try to pull it over our eyes or, or try to pull a fast one on us. No, because God allowed for there to be, um, labor laws to safeguard us and to protect us from such underhanded practices. So once again, it is very practical that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is interested in Simon's occupation. God was interested in Jacob's occupation. The Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit are interested in our occupation. Beloved brethren, as we see that at Jesus's instructions, now Peter, yes, he was a seasoned, and let me just give you a picture of that. Let's say seas, uh, uh, Peter was in the fishing industry for thirty-plus years. So you gotta know that he knew the ends, the outs, ups and downs of the lake, of the fish, of what time to fish, how to fish, what bait to use, and all of that. Now, in this particular incident, listen to what Peter says again to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Peter answering said unto our Lord, master, we have toiled all night and have taken nothing, but nevertheless, at your word, I will let the net down. Now, understand this, beloved brethren. We may be in the gospel, the ministry, Bible study, uh, going out giving tracks, speaking to our coworkers, family, friends, neighbors about what thus say of the Lord, and it may be proven to no success. So our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ may say to us thus, you know what? I want you to start a Bible study. Oh, Lord, I speak to my coworkers, I speak to family members, I speak to strangers on the street, and it's nope. Do what I say, start a Bible study. And we'll say those same words that Simon said, nevertheless, Lord, at thy word, we'll do a Bible study. And when we do a Bible study, we get one persons, two persons, four persons, eight persons, ten persons, fifteen persons. And even if we don't, we are doing what thus say of the Lord, and we will have success. And listen, as the paragraph helps us to appreciate that they had such a great multitude of fishes that their net broke, and they beckoned unto their partners to come and help them to bring this multitude of fish into the boat. Beloved brethren, this leads me, it's you beloved ones, help Brother Lyndon and I. Beloved brethren, Brother Lyndon and I, we fish with you every Saturday, but understand this, throughout the week, seven days a week, Brother Lyndon and I are fishing as well. So we're asking you, we're enlisting you to come fish with us, beloved brethren. Fish in your area, because we're, Brother Lyndon and I are not in the area of Samina or Sister Gail, or in the area of my daughter at school, or my wife as a homemaker, or any of you other beloved ones, we are not in your areas. So we're asking you to fish as well as we are fishing, because our ultimate goal and all of our ultimate desire is to bring men and women unto the Lord. Now, beloved brethren, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ has told Peter and them that they will soon be fishers of men. Now, beloved brethren, this is a very interesting term that our Lord is using, being fishers of men. Now, we have to understand that fish, fishing is the art of taking fish out of their environment to our enjoyment, pleasure, and eating, to our eating. Now, beloved brethren, that, that, that aspect of bringing them out of their environment, when we fish for men, we are bringing them out of their environment as well. And what is their environment that they're in? Remember, the apostle Paul said, and that is what some of you were, where you were washed, you were made clean, and I'm paraphrasing, you were made fit for the kingdom of God. So when we go fishing for men and women, beloved, we are bringing them out of their environment and bringing them or preparing or helping them to be prepared for God's kingdom as well. So that is why this is a very fitting term where our Lord said that they will be fishers of men. Verse eleven, beloved brethren, listen to these beautiful words. And when they had brought their ships to land, they forsuk all and followed him. Beloved brethren, we today are not subject to the same actions of the despotism of our Lord's day. And what I mean by that is this, yes, they truly left all, their fishing industry, they left families, friends, relatives. They left all in order to get the gospel out, because this leaving was of such a success that it reached there in Pakistan, to our loved ones there, and reached the shores of America. It's, it's spreading around the entire globe because of these ones leaving all and following him. Now, beloved brethren, I work for transit. Okay, so God is not expecting me to leave MTA and leave my family in a pickle to go and be engaged in this gospel. Now, I can leave all in the sense that seven days a week, beloved brethren, I am preparing for this Saturday study. And in the midst of that preparation, I am speaking to coworkers, I'm speaking to customers, I'm speaking to neighbors, I'm speaking to strangers, I'm speaking to families, and I'm speaking to friends. In the sense, I'm leaving my comfort zone, so to speak, and presenting to gospel to all who would listen so that they can become sons and daughters, as you and I are sons and daughters of the Father. So in that sense, we're leaving all in to become sons and daughters of the Father. Verse twelve, and it came to pass, when he was in a certain city, behold, a man full of leprosy, who seeing Jesus fell on his face, and besought him, saying, Lord, if thou wilt, thou canst make me clean. Verse thirteen, and Jesus put forth his hand, touched him, and saying, I will be thou clean, and immediately the leprosy departed from him. Verse fourteen, and he charged them to tell no man, but go and show himself to the priest and offer for thine cleansing according to Mo- according as Moses commanded, for testimony unto them. Beloved brethren, we've covered parts of, of the leprosy, the, 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 the in-depth, uh, how can I say, of this disease and its, um, impact on the person who had it, and actually the impact on his circle within his community. Because if persons had leprosy, they had to be removed from their circle, family, friends, relatives, loved ones, concerns, because leprosy is highly contagious. Now remember, we favorably compare leprosy to sin. And beloved brethren, yes, sin is highly contagious. Beloved brethren, we can infect others with our sinful behavior and sinful ways. Let me just give you, let me just give you an example and illustration. At my job, and I'm just going to just be as forthright with you guys as possible. At my job, they cuss like it's no tomorrow. And I mean, they do it so freely, it's a part of their everyday language. Beloved brethren, I jam my finger one day, opening the window, my window operations, and I honestly, speaking of a truth, almost let a cuss word slip from my mouth because of my environment. And now again, I'm not blaming them, but the fact is, I'm surrounded by this daily. The scripture says, lot soul was vexed because he was surrounded by those who daily and continuously practiced sin. So beloved brethren, this is why we have to have self-control. We have to monitor the company that we keep or the persons that we're around, because yes, their leprosy slash sin can affect us. So beloved brethren, once again, those who had leprosy had to be un- uh, uh, discommunicated from other persons. Leprosy also had the tendency to make you without feeling. Those who had leprosy, they did, they, they, the nerve endings were damaged, they were destroyed, and they unwittingly, uh, damaged their fingers, toes, and other parts of their body. Beloved brethren, sin makes us insensitive. Years ago, and I don't mean to be so graphic, but just to help you to understand the depravity of sin. Years ago, um, let's just say, well, let me just come from this angle. They are making light of, of, of one of our bodily functions, and they're making it into a cartoon, into an emoji. They're making it, they're, they're desensitizing us to it. One of our natural bodily functions, they're making light of it, and it's, and it's, and it's so, they got it painted brown and all cute, and making it look like an emoji. The rate of murders and cussings on movies and television, they're desensitizing us to that as well. Used to cringe at these things, now you, 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 you just wink at it, and you just move on like it's nothing. So beloved brethren, the, the, the high rate or high velocity of sin is making us very, very desensitized to what's going on around us. And that shouldn't be, beloved brethren, because if that's the case, and we accept it, uh, ju- ju- just to put this out there, June is called, uh, Gay Pride Month. It's on the commercials, it's s- s- scattered on the wall, on posters, um, these, um, electronic posters, um, again, they're trying to desensitize us to something that God calls a sin and an abomination. Again, the effects of leprosy slash sin is what's causing us to actually be, become desensitized to it as well. And we have to be mindful of this, beloved brethren. This is why fellowship and gathering together with these though that we can strengthen, uphold one another, and we can bless one another, and doing these things, we can be healed. Man, now remember, leperous persons could be touched by normal this man, Lord Jesus Christ, he may not have been touched for X amount of months, days, even possibly years. And a touch of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ not only blessed him, not only comforted Days, even possibly years, and a touch of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ not only blessed him, not only comforted him. It healed him. Beloved brethren, sometimes we have to put our arms around a sinful one or one that's sinning. And do not want to be in this state because understand, this man who had leprosy, he did not want to remain in this leprous state. And there are those around us who do not want to be engaged in sin. One of the, one of the sisters I was talking to, and I feel ashamed. Um, I was talking to her and I was saying, you know, I noticed that you have a very kindred spirit. I said, let me invite you to our Saturday Bible studies. And as I'm trying to give her my information, she goes, Brother Scott. I'm already a part of a Bible study group. I said, oh, I said, well, that's good. I hope that you're getting well fed. She goes, Brother Scott, I'm a part of your Bible study group. And I said, oh, my gosh, you gotta forgive me. Who are you exactly? So she gave me her name. And she said, oh, brothers, I I said, oh, sister, please forgive me. I did not recognize you. She said, that's okay, because when we met, I was pregnant. And now that I don't have the bump, you don't recognize me. I said, oh, my goodness, sister, I am so sorry. So what I'm saying in that connection is, man, I lost my thought. Oh, my gosh, I lost my thought. Uh, it was such a a joy, a a joy, a justification. Yes, she was telling me that she was going through some things. And she was actually telling me that she's hooked on um. The social media, um Twitter and um whatever other social platforms they are. And I just was comforting her saying, sister, I was there. Not on the social aspect, but I was hooked on other things, other sinful, ungodly things. So I can readily relate to you. So as I was talking to her, I had my hand on her arm. So once again, just a touch from you beloved ones to someone who's engaged on who involved in sin. And don't want to be there, they welcome that touch like this leprous man welcome the touch of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, that should cause you and I to say hallelujah. And beloved brethren, just um ju- just 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 for, just for the love of it. I Googled um how to say hallelujah in Chinese, French, and Indonesia. And surprisingly, surprisingly, and I'm gonna read it to y'all. Surprisingly, it doesn't stray too far from the. Version of hallelujah, what we say in English. Listen to it in Chinese, in Chinese, it's. The H is silent, so it's aleluia. In French, it's aleluia. In Asian, in Indonesia, it's haleluie, haleluia. And in this language called quechua, Q U E C H U A, it's aleluia. So we see how this beautiful word of hallelujah has a similar um sound or diction. Across other cultural languages. Beloved brethren, verse thirteen helps us to appreciate. That if we go to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ in our current sinful state. Please do not be deluded in saying, well, I'm gonna get my life together and I'm gonna stop this sin, then I'll come to Jesus. No. It'll never happen. Come as you are. Remember scripture says, while we were yet sinners. While we were in the midst of our sins, God sent forth his son to save us out. Of our sinful stage and out of our sinful state. Beloved brethren, the remainder of the chapter goes on to helps, the remainder of chapter five helps us to appreciate. That Jesus eats with sinners. Now beloved brethren, I wanted to just capitalize on this just really, really briefly. There are those who are engaged in in sinful conduct and activities. And they'll say such terminology as this. Well, Jesus ate with sinners. So they're saying that Jesus ate with sinners to the point of he approved their behavior. No, 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 and no. Please understand that when our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ sat down with those who. Were part of them, he sat down with them for them to become a part of him. Remember, when they brought to him that woman that was caught in adultery. Yes, Jesus was in her presence, Jesus was thoroughly around her. But what did our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ say to her? He said, woman, where art thou accusers? She said, the Lord, there are none. Jesus said, neither do I accuse you. But our Lord went on to say, go and sin no more. So beloved brethren, please understand that when we gather around each other. And when we gather around those who are sinful. That we are not doing it so that we can become. Weed smokers, alcoholics, ornicators, adulterers, homosexuals, no, 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 no. We gather around with such ones to bring them what does say of the Lord for. To come over on the side of Christ and not to let them influence us to come to their side. Because remember, as we just spoke about leprosy, leprosy is contagious, it's highly contagious. So we do not want to be infected by the ways and the sins of the world. We do not want to be affected by the ways and the sins of the world. We want to infect the world with Christ and get them over to salvation. This thought of old versus new beloved brethren, you do not put old, you do not put new. On an old skin, for it will burst. The thought behind that is this, beloved brethren. We do not bring a new person and put him under the old mosaic um economy. The old mosaic economy had served its purpose for a time. We're now under grace, so we're putting new persons under a new transaction. And this new transaction that we're under is the grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, given us by God the Father. Leading us dearly by the Holy Spirit. Brother Lyndon.
God bless you. Indeed, God bless you all. I wanted to just give him uh another poor taste. We're going to eat tonight. I'm just astounded. I mean, I'm still like little child in the candy, so I'm just uh, I'm just in awe of uh. What? The Lord. Will uh. Will give us. Okay, so um. Luke, chapter six. It's fascinating and just to give you a little preview. Yes, sure. Is really being radical. And we're going to dive in. The importance of this Sabbath, I know we discussed this earlier. But again, we're talking about foreshadows, we're talking about signs. And. This always stands my mind. The uh Pharisees at that time were questioning him and they wanted to see a sign and he says, you know it. You adulterous generation, you seek a sign, but I'll give you a sign. Just the way that Jonas was in the heart of a whale for three days, so shall the son of man be. In the heart of the earth for three days. Now we read about. Hippos and Jesus eating grains. On heads of grain on the sh- on the Sabbath. And they were accused of being unlawful, but we know that again. It's not lawful to do good on the Sabbath, on a Sh- Sabbath. We need to focus on that. Okay, so Luke, chapter six. One Sabbath, Jesus was going through the grain fields and his disciples began to pick some heads of grain. Rub them in their hands and eat the kernels. Some of the Pharisees asked, why are you doing what is unlawful on the Sabbath? Okay. In early studies, we discussed about um the last day. So you see the disciples are picking up heads of grain on the Sabbath. So we read in Hebrews chapter three and Hebrews chapter four. Uh, that the Israelites did not enter the rest of God as promised because of their unbelief. And now we see again, if you do not believe, you not enter the rest of God. If you can. Turn to Joshua. And uh we'll go to Joshua and. We'll see what this rest is all about. Um, just bear with me one moment as I get there. And uh. The scriptures say. That God. Promises to give. The Israelites rest by giving them this land. And let me just read that to you. And and it's beautiful to know that. This land that God is talking about is the rest. So we are in the wilderness right now as we speak. And we are taking a journey, we're taking a pilgrimage, and we're going to find this rest. As long as we hold firmly to God's words and believe. That we will have rest. Okay, just bear with me uh one moment. As I find it. Okay, we go to Joshua, chapter one, verse thirteen. It is written, remember the command that Moses, the servant of the Lord, gave you after he said. The Lord of God will give you rest by giving you this land. We are safe and secure in the presence of God. God is our sheltered presence. You could be a millionaire. And have all the entourage and bodyguards and and all the security alarm systems. But they cannot protect you. If you're not in the favor of God, you will not be protected. From the walls of death. But as we know that we. Once we are in Christ Jesus, there's no condemnation. We are at rest. And I'll jump ahead to Hebrews, chapter three. And the beginning of four, and we're gonna, and he's going to say. Rest. Promise to us. Okay, it is written. Hebrews, chapter three, verse sixteen. Who were they who heard and rebelled? Were they not all those Moses led out of Egypt? And with whom was he angry for forty years? Was it not with those who sinned, whose bodies perished in the wilderness? And to whom did God swear that they would never enter his rest? If not to those who disobeyed. So we see that they were not able to answer because of their unbelief. Again, Hebrews, chapter four, verses one uh three. It is written, therefore, since the promise of entering his rest still stands. Let us be careful that none of us be found to have fallen short of that. For we also have had the good news proclaimed to us, just as they did. But the message they heard was of no value to them because they did not share the faith of those who obeyed. Now we who have believed, enter that rest. Just as God has said, so I declare an oath in my anger, they shall never enter my rest. So if we go out there and we are witnessing, we are proclaiming the good news and saying, saying that, hey, if you believe in Yeshua. You will not perish, but have eternal life. If people's um view Jesus as merely a good teacher, a a a of a a great philosopher. Uh, in his time, you will perish. If you do not believe that Jesus is deity, if you do not believe that Jesus is our creator. Let alone our Savior. We will perish. And will be separated from the presence of God, where there is rest and peace. Eternal life. Uh, let's go back to Luke, chapter six. So you know, the Pharisees of that time did not understand that, they didn't have ears to hear. And they were always scrutinizing Jesus. So Jesus answered them, have you never read that David, what David did when he and his companions were hungry? He entered the house of God and taking the consecrated bread, he ate what is lawful only for the priest to eat. And he also gave some to his companions. Not by faith, when we believe in the good news. We are not only saved from death, we become priests. So we see that David at that time was not. Lawful for him to eat this consecrated bread. That only the priests were allowed to eat, but now we see. If the priests have access to eternal life, so do we by faith. We are justified by faith, not by the law. The just shall live by faith. We who have not received mercy are now shall with mercy, well, because we are part of the nation of priests. Then Jesus said to them, the Son of Man is the Lord of the Sabbath. On another Sabbath, he went into the synagogue and was teaching. And a man there um whose right hand was shriveled. The Pharisees and the teachers of the law were looking for a reason to accuse Jesus. As they watched him closely to see if he would heal on the Sabbath. But Jesus knew that what they were thinking and said to the man with a shriveled hand. Get up and stand in front of everyone. So he got up and stood there. Then Jesus said to them, I ask you, which is lawful on the Sabbath, to do good or to do evil? To save life or to destroy it? He looked around at them all and then said to the man, stretch out your hand. He did so and his hand was completely restored, but the Pharisees and the teachers of the law were furious. And began to discuss with one another what they might do to Jesus. One of the, on one of those days, Jesus went out to the mountainside to pray and spent the night praying to God. When morning came, he called his disciples to him and chose twelve of them. Whom he also designated apostles, Simon. Whom he named Peter, his brother Andrew, James, John. Philip, Bartholomew, Matthew, Thomas, James, son of Altheus. Simon, who was called the uh Zealot. Judas, son of James, and Judas Iscariot, who became a traitor. He went down with them and stood on a level place. He went down with them and stood on a level place. A large crowd of his disciples was there and a great number of people from all over Judea, from Jerusalem and from the coastal region around Tyre and on Sidon, who had come to him and to be healed of their diseases. Those troubled by impure spirits were cured, and the people all tried to touch him because power was, power was coming from him and healing them all. Looking at his disciples, he said, blessed are you who are poor, for yours is the kingdom of God. Blessed are you who hunger now, for you will be satisfied. Blessed are you who weep now, for you will laugh. Blessed are you when people hate you, when they exclude you and insult you and reject your name as evil because of the son of man. I wanna focus on the poor. Who think that if you're rich in material possessions, we have our life made. Everything is convenient. We have access to whatever we want with the means of money. So we don't have to go through the hardship of starvation. We don't have to go through the hardship of getting our lights cut off because we didn't pay the bill. We have all the money that, we have all the things that money can buy, so to speak. But God did not consider the people who are rich in material wealth rich. People with great possessions are bankrupt. I often wonder wondered why, but when we're spiritually bankrupt, the presence of God is not in our lives. We do not have that intimacy, that secure relationship. And on and Yahshua is the key to this relationship. He is the one who is our advocate. He's the one, by his death, brought reconciliations to us. Now we are reconciled to the Father because of his beautiful sacrifice. Let's go to James, chapter two, verse five. This, my dear brothers and sisters, has not God chosen those who are poor in the eyes of the world to be rich in faith? And to inherit the kingdom he promised those who have loved him? We also uh read in second Corinthians, chapter eight, verse nine. For you know the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, that though he was rich, yet for your sake he became poor, so that through his poverty might become rich. Revelation, chapter two, verse nine. I know your afflictions and your poverty, yet you are rich. When we are rich, we are filled with wisdom and understanding. Wisdom is the fear of the Lord, and understanding is shunning evil. To God, wisdom, understanding, knowledge, salvation, these are the treasures that we need to thirst for. Why? Because they are from everlasting to everlasting. The riches you see here, all this will be gone. It will be all gone. Let's take a journey to cha- um first Timothy, chapter six. There we read. First Timothy, chapter six, verses six through ten. Well, godliness with contentment is great gain, for we've brought nothing into the world, and we can take nothing out of it. But if we have food and clothing, we will be content with that. Those who want to get rich fall into temptation and are trapped and into many foolish and harmful desires that plunge people into ruin and destruction. For the love of money is a root of all kinds of evil. Some people eager for money have wanted from the faith and pierced themselves with many greets. God chose the poor to be rich in faith. I remember when I was uh a customer service representative in Prudential Securities and they had this uh account called the Command Account. It was a money market fund and um it accrued more interest um than the banks, and people who were investors had this command card. And um even though it was a money market fund, the command card gave them access uh to um spend from this money market fund. And the people I talked to, some had millions and millions of dollars, and they were just, I mean, they, if they saw felt that they had a discrepancy in their account, they, I mean, argued with you to the last penny, very stingy. What I see on the other hand of the equation, people who are poor give lavishly to express their love for someone. But you would never see that um exemplified in the community of the so-called rich. If they don't get a tax write-off, if they don't get anything in return, they would not even consider helping the poor. So um now the Beatitudes. Jesus is the same today, yesterday, and forevermore. He is the truth. The truth does not change. Jesus does not change. His word will always stand. No matter what the culture may say, no matter what this philosophy may say, no matter what the opinion of man is, the truth will stand firmly. And we've, we see that again, we are going to suffer. There's no way around it. And I want to go to Isaiah, chapter sixty-five, verses thirteen to fourteen. And there uh we will, we will see the beauty of God's promise to those who love him. And if you are loved by God, you are a servant of God, and you are commissioned, you have been recruited. You were given an assignment way in advance, and you should feel privileged to serve the Lord. It is written, Isaiah, chapter sixty-five, verse thirteen through fourteen. My servants will eat, but you will go thirsty. My servants will drink, but you will go thirsty. My servants will rejoice, but you will be put to shame. My servants will sing out of the joy of their hearts, but you will cry out from the anguish of heart and wail in brokenness of spirit. It is written, let's see the similarity in this speech. Rejoice in that day and leap for joy, because great is your reward in heaven, for that is how their ancestors treated the prophets. But woe to you who are rich, for you have already received your comfort. Woe to you who are well-fed now, for you will go hungry. Woe to you who laugh now, for you will mourn and weep. Woe to you when everyone speaks well of you, for that is how their ancestors treated the false prophets. We see that in this very day and age. The blind leading the blind. And people equating Jesus to a genie. If you just pray this prayer, and Jesus will make all your bank accounts fat. And you don't have to deal with lack anymore because Jesus defeated poverty for you when he died in the cross and rose again. And they're teaching the masses of people this fantasy. People, their errors are itching to hear about now. They want to try and cater to their appetites, their deceptive, their deceitful cravings, and the slavery is without Jesus. No matter how sweet the desire may be, you'll never be satisfied. You are like death. The graves are not satisfied. And the whole illusion is, okay, I felt good this time, I need to have more. Oh, man, I'm not satisfied. I need to have more and more and more. Yet you're still in a thirsty state. Jesus is the only one who can satisfy you. We are creatures divi- designed with this void, and this void is reserved for Yahshua. You try to have sex, you try to go out here and watch this movie, or go to this concert, or go here and there, can never fill that void. The only one who can fill in that void is Yahshua. That's why we are no longer restless. When the presence of Jesus is in our hearts, we are at rest. Shabbat. Okay, so let's read further down. But to you who are listening, I say, love your enemies. Do good to those who hate you. Bless those who curse you. Pray for those who mistreat you. If someone slaps you on the cheek, turn to them via a sp-. Someone takes your coat, do not withhold your shirt from them. Give to everyone who asks you, and if anyone takes what belongs to you, do not demand it back. Do to as you would have them do to you. It reminds me of this uh um late rapper, uh triple X, Testacion. Well, I can't pronounce his name properly, but he was robbed. And uh he was in the car and uh the robbers wanted his chain, and he refused to give it up, and they ended up shooting him to death. Don't hold on to these possessions. It only leads to death. I've seen other cases where um young women, they drop their phone um and they, in their attempt to retrieve the phone, they end up getting killed trying to retrieve the phone from the the train tracks or um at the bottom of the bus. It's tragic. So that's why Jesus emphasized that if you make him your possession, all these possessions are meaningless. And uh I'll read it to you here in Philippians, chapter three, where uh Paul says, verse seven. But whatever were gains to me, I know I now consider loss for the sake of Christ. What is more, I consider everything a loss because of the surpassing worth of knowing Christ, Jesus, my Lord, for whose sake I have lost all things. I consider them rubbish, that I may gain Christ and be found in him, not having the righteousness of my own that comes from the law, but that which is through faith in Christ, the righteousness that comes from God on the basis of faith. If you receive encounters from Yahshua, consider it pure joy. When the son of man is manifesting his presence in your life through confirmations. What I mean by confirmation is you hear this word and you hear it discussed after this Bible study is over. You hear it the next day. He is making his presence known to you through timely words. That's the treasure we need. Also, the enemy wants everybody to be plunged into destruction. So he will be an instigator, and he'll have somebody provoke you, and he'll use provoking schemes to get you out of character, but his his plot is to steal, kill, and destroy. So if someone slaps you in the face, our natural instinct is, I'm gonna slap you back. How dare you disrespect me like that? But then we get caught up in the trap and we end up destroying one another. But to preserve the peace and to preserve love, which the devil hates, we turn the other cheek. Jesus on the cross said to those who pierced him, who cast lot for his clothes, forgive them, Father, for they do not know what they do. And I know it's uh it's a growing process. When you're hurt, naturally, we're not equipped to think the best of someone who is responsible for bringing us that pain, but for us to avoid the poison, to avoid the enemy's bait, to destroy someone who insulted us or offended us. We, by the grace of the Holy Spirit, we can express this love to the person who has mistreated us. And it keeps us free from darkness. Holding grudges will not set us free. It will keep us in bondage to sin and death. And that is why God commands us to forgive one another our trespasses, to love those who hate us, because let's think about it. Before you were called into the marvelous light, you too were once enemies of God. You didn't want to reconcile with God, you mocked God. You thought that indulging sinful pleasures made you happy, let alone you didn't realize that in the end you had gall, bitterness, regret. But by his grace, even when we were yet sinners, he loved us. And we need to cling on to the Holy Spirit so we can express that love to others despite them hurting us. And I know, again, I'm I'm learning myself. I don't just wake up in the morning and says, you know what, someone just smashed my windows to my car. I'm I'm gonna forgive him because he does not know what he's doing. That's not my instinct. That's not my uh reaction. But uh as long as uh we abide in the Word and we engage in his Word and understand that we're looking at a permanent setting. And the more and more we value Jesus as our treasure, we will underha- we will have a deeper understanding why that's mandated to us. And again, an evidence of being born again is we love the brothers. Those who do not walk in love belong to death. And that was clearly uh explained to us in first John, chapter three. Let me get over there and I'll read it to you. And it talks about Cain, how he belonged to death because he killed Caleb out of jealousy, I mean, not Caleb. He ki- he killed Abel out of jealousy. So it is written, first John, chapter three, verse eleven going down. For this is the message you heard from the beginning. We should love one another. Do not be like Cain, who belonged to the evil one and murdered his brother. And why did he murder him? Because his own actions were evil and his brothers were righteous. Do not be surprised, my brothers and sisters, if the world hates you. We know that we have passed from death to life because we love each other. Anyone who does not love remains in death. Anyone who hates a brother or sister is a murderer. And you know that no murderer has eternal life residing in him. We see that if you love. You know God. If you do not love. You do not know God. So then. We come to scriptures where it says, hey, we're gone from me. I never knew you. Well, haven't we um cast our demons in your name and prophesied in your name? Away from me, you evildoers. I do not know you. So for us to know God, we need to be born again. And when we're born again with the spirit, we are going to express love to one another. If there's no evidence of love and of God in your life. That means you are not born again. You do not belong to him. I wanna keep it frank with you. You cannot be preaching the word of God and have no love. You have no empathy for the weak and the crippled and the poor. The destitute, the fatherless, and I can go on and on. If I'm only focused on status quo. If I'm only focused on my personal agendas. That's not evidence of being born again. We are considered murderers. And as we see. People kill, lie, and destroy the lives of others. So they can have this so-called. Financial gain. They oppress the poor so they can live lavishly. We see prosperity creatures. Exploiting the poor. Getting rich at the expense of their. Desperation. And poor people trying to escape. The woes of their lives. Trying to escape famine and thinking that if they give this preacher. Most of their monies, they would somehow escape poverty. Which is false. Don't watch many hen. Ken- I think Kenneth Copeland is his name, the Creep Low Dollars. T. Jakes. These are all motivational speakers. They speak the gift. They got the, as they would say, pimps. They got the gift of gab. They know how to hook you in. Through sweet. Lies. Please. Lean on Christ. Cling on to him. And I know I've encountered many, many. Episodes in my life where I said things I regret because I was hurt. I was wounded. But now I realize by the word and the grace of God. Keep the doors of your mouth shut. Don't get entangled in foolish arguments. Walk away. Let them have the last word. Let them have the last word. Let them have the last word. You're focused on pleasing your commanding office, Je- Jesus Christ. He kept his mouth shut. When he was focused on doing the will, even though he suffered to do the will of God. So it applies to us. We need to keep our mouths shut to express the love of God and to keep focused on fulfilling. Our Father's will. Let's go back to Luke. Okay. If you love those who love you, what credit is that to you? Even sinners love those who love them. And if you do good to those who are good to you, what credit is that to you? Even sinners do that. And if you lend to those from whom you expect repayment, what credit is that to you? Even sinners lend to sinners, expecting to be repaid in full. But love your enemies, do good to them and lend to them without expecting to get anything back. Then your reward will be great and you will be children of the Most High because he is kind to the ungrateful and wicked. Be merciful, just as your Father is merciful. Again, we were naturally born wicked enemies of God. Because of his loving kindness, we are being changed. We come to our senses that we should repent. He's not, he's been so kind to me. Why am I being rebellious against God? Man. You're saying I shouldn't fornicate? Ah, you know, you know, God, you know. You helped me escape this. I did not get any sexually transmitted diseases or I didn't get any baby mama drama. Or you you got me out of this and out of kindness. We. Are. Being. Changed. We walk. In repentance. I'm not saying that we're perfect. I'm not saying that we got there. Even Paul himself says, I'm striving. To get there. I'm not there yet. But I let go of the past and I keep striving toward. The goal. Of perfection. Not a perfectionist. Thinking that I can never slip and I can lose my salvation if I am the so-called captive of my own soul. No. I'm given this thorn. In my flesh. I'm being buffeted. I'm going through. Series of trials. Trial after trial after trial, going through suffering. But yes. This is to crucify the flesh. It's a very, very painful process, but we see that even though the truth may hurt at first. It brings us healing. Do not judge. And you will not be judged. Do not condemn and you will not be condemned. Forgive and you will be forgiven. Give and it will be given to you. A good measure pressed down, shaken together and running over will be poured into the lap. Into your lap. For with the measure you use, it will be measured to you. I know people say, you can't judge me. You ain't God, you can't judge me. Yes, we can judge you. We have to set boundaries. David even used judgment, okay? Saul was pursuing him. He loved Saul as his friend. He used to play for Saul to comfort him. When he was tormented by demons. And then now out of this Joe's rage, he wanted to kill David. Yet he used good judgment. You stay over in your camp and I'll stay right here in the cave with my men. And even Saul said he is more righteous than he is. So people will try and. May give you this guilty conscience. We're in uh the the gay pride month. And Christians are considered bigots. Now reminded, ignorant. Well, God loves everybody. Except, yes, we accept you as you are, but we don't want you to change, remain the way you are. People who came to Jesus and wanted to heal their children didn't want to them to remain in that condition. Just bear with me one moment.
And beloved brethren, while we're waiting for Lyndon to return, just wanted to elaborate on a point. The man that was healed of his leprosy, the religious leaders, they. Thought Jesus was exercising blasphemy. They say because only God can heal and forgive sins. Well, they were right. They were absolutely right. Only God can. And beloved brethren, through these studies, we've been helped to appreciate. That Jesus. Is God the Son. Remember. Jesus is not God the Father, he is God the Son. Listen to the words of God himself. Speaking of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, turn in your Bibles, please, to Hebrews, chapter one. And in that, we're going to look at. Verses uh verse eight, Hebrews, chapter one, verse eight. And listen to what God himself. Is saying and addressing our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Hebrews, chapter one, verse eight, and this is the King James Version. Hebrews one, eight reads as follows. But unto the Son, he saith. Thy throne, and you know what, beloved brother, let's just get a a fuller picture, starting at verse one of Hebrews, chapter one. God, who at sundry times and in divers manners spake in time past unto the fathers by the prophets. Has in these last days spoken unto us by his Son. Whom he hath appointed heir of all things, by whom also he made the worlds. Who, being the brightness of his glory and the express image of his person. And upholding all things by the word of his power, when he had by himself purged our sins. Sat down on the right hand of the majesty on high. Now just hold your place right there. Let's just get some further confirmation and affirmation that this is Jesus by God's right hand side. Acts chap- listen to what Acts, chapter seven reads as follows. And these are the words of Stephen. Acts, chapter seven. Verse fifty-six. Uh, starting at verses fifty-five and fifty-six by Stephen, Acts, chapter seven. But he, Stephen, being full of the Holy Ghost, looked up steadfastly into heaven. And saw the glory of God and Jesus standing on the right hand of God. And said, behold, I see the heavens open and a son of man standing on the right hand of God. So right there, beloved brethren, we have. The words of Stephen allowed him by the Holy Spirit, saying that that's Jesus. On the right hand of the Father. Continue verse, Hebrews, chapter one, verses four through. Eight and Brother Lyndon, I'll give it over to you after this.
Yeah.
He had made so much better than the angels. As he by. Hath by inheritance obtained a more excellent name than they. But unto which of the angels said God at any time, you are my son, this day have I begotten thee. And again, I will be to him a father, and he shall be to me a son. And again, when God bringeth in the firstborn until the God first begotten into the world. He saith, and let all the angels of God worship him. And of the angels, he saith, who maketh his angel spirits. And his ministers are flame of fire. Now, verse eight. But unto the Son, this is God speaking. But unto the Son, he saith, thy throne, O God, is forever and ever. A scepter of righteousness is a scepter of thy kingdom. So when those religious leaders said only God can forgive sins, they were right. And who did we just get the description by God of who Jesus is? God. Jesus is God the Son. So. As God's son and as God the Son, Jesus had the right and the authority to forgive sins. Brother Lyndon.
Okay. All right, let's go back to um. Judging. And thank you, Brother Scott, for giving that input. We we will realize that. God is. There's a relationship. When it comes to God, there's a relationship with the Father, Son and Holy Spirit. That's where we get the word community from. Because there's a relationship. One looks after one another. It says in Ecclesi- um, I believe in Ecclesiastes. Three strands is better than one. Or one can pick up the other one. So um. I'll get to that later, but. We can, we can discuss um. About judging. And Paul emphasized. This is first Corinthians, chapter six. Verses one. Uh, through six. As and uh as a matter of fact, two, seven, I'll read it very carefully for you. If any one of you has a dispute with one another. Do you dare to take it before the ungodly for judgment instead of before the Lord's people? Or do you know that the Lord's people will judge the world? And if you are to judge the world, are you not competent to judge trivial cases? Do you not know that we will judge angels? How much more the things of this life? Therefore, if you are, if you have disputes about such matters, do you ask for ruling? Ru- um, ruling from those who whose way of life is scorned in the church? I say this to shame you. I- is it possible that there is nobody among you wise enough to judge a dispute between believers? But instead, one brother takes another to court and this in front of. Um, believers. The very fact that you have lawsuits among you. Means you have been completely defeated already. So again. We're not gonna seek to sue or have lawsuits beca- um, because that shows that we do not have forgiveness for one another. But yes, we need to show good judgment. We're not judgmental. But we're gonna show good judgment. To do God's will. So if I say, if someone says, hey. My name is Stephen and I wanna marry um Harry. And I'm gonna go to your church because you said you um it's, I've I've been told that God loves everybody. And you're the pastor of that church, you're gonna say, listen, young man. We do not practice that. We're not gonna marry you. Are we all of a sudden being bigots because we're using good judgment? No. God wants you to judge wisely, not to look on the. Not to judge by outward appearances. Or be um mechanically judging people. Or judging others when you yourself do what they do. Which is hypocrisy. But if we judge purely to serve our Father. To serve his will, then that's what we need to do. So people try to. Take that out of context. So they can create it to their own sinful desires. We read again um. Going back to love your enemy. We see in Exodus, chapter twenty-one, verse twenty-four. Eye for eye, tooth for tooth. Hand for hand. Well, we we now are safe and secure in God's will for us. And we 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 trust him that he will vindicate us. And we don't need to take matters in our own hands. So that's why Jesus was um preaching. That we need to love one another, even our enemy. In twenty-one, verse twenty-four. If people are fighting and hit a pregnant woman and so forth. But I'm gonna drive it home with this one. Eye for eye, tooth for tooth, hand for hand, foot for foot. Burn for burn, wound for wound, bruise for bruise. Some people think, man. And God is being a hypocrite. He's saying eye for an eye here and he's saying turn the other cheek here. We see that under the law. The law was instituted to keep people because at that time. If someone stole. A donkey, they'll go out and burn down the whole family. But to keep everybody at bay, to keep everything under control. The law was instituted as a a task massacre, so to speak. Well, we know that God was using the task massacre. Master to show that we are. Flawed. We have fallen short and we are in dire need of a Savior. So the law was instituted not only to keep everybody at bay. But to to point to Jesus. And as Brother Scott. Um, beautifully. Explains how he was stopped, pulled over for speeding. And mercy was extended to him, but. He respected the boundaries of the law. Why? To preserve safety. Driving is dangerous. If there is no law. So that's why we have to respect these boundaries. But yet again. Now we are free. Do we indulge the flesh again? No, we do not. Now there's a a deeper law, the law of Christ. And the law of Christ not only looks on the surface the way the law does, but now the law. Of Christ digs deeper, even in the realm of your thoughts. Your attitudes. Your intentions. So that's why. We look, we read these scriptures very closely. So let's go on, let's read further down in Luke, chapter six. As we come to a closing, then we'll go over on Luke, chapter seven. He also told him this parable. Can the blind lead the blind? Will they not both fall into a pit? We already mentioned about the prosperity teachers and the people who fall for their silly lies. That's an example of. The blind leading the blind. Or if you're familiar with this cata- this dilemma, this catastrophe, Jim Jones. He was surrounded by the feds. He thought that they were gonna crack down on his cult. In Guyana. So he had everybody drink poison Kool-Aid. He died and they all died. That's another example of the blind. Leading the blind. And ending up in a pit. The student is not above the teacher, but everyone who is fully trained will be like their teacher. So we will suffer like Jesus will be hated, just the way Jesus was hated. We are not better than our master. We are his servants. Why do you look at the speck of sawdust in your brother's eye? And pay? And pay no attention to the plank in your own eye? How can you say to your brother, brother, let me take the speck out of your eye, when you yourself fail to see the plank in your own eye? You hypocrite. First, take the plank out of your eye, and then. You will see clearly to remove the speck from your brother's eyes. So I see my brother fornicating, and then I say, hey, you know what? Uh, my my wife's not really treating me well, or my girlfriend's not treating me well. You know, I'm just gonna have sex with this other girl. Because I can't stand it. We had a crazy argument. I feel that I'm justified to have sex. You're a hypocrite. If you want to win your brother to Christ, you need to stop what you're doing and say, you know what? This fornication is not good. Listen, brother, you shouldn't fornicate. Look, I ended, I almost ended up having an abortion, or I ended up. Almost breaking my marriage. I almost ended up a beautiful relationship with my girlfriend because I fornicated with another. You don't want to go through what I went through. So I'm just telling you, brother, please, you 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 shouldn't do that. That's what. Being a bright witness is. We don't. Preach, we don't practice what we preach, we preach what we practice. So this, being a disciple, we're not thinking about gaining numbers, we're thinking about making disciples by the grace of God. Changing the attitude of the hearts of the listeners, the people who are thirsting and hungering for God. No good tree bears bad fruit, nor does a bad tree bear good fruit. Each tree is recognized by its own fruit. People do not pick figs from thorn bushes or grapes from briars. Now, this is people. People don't look to have somebody give them a favor, and they know that person's cruel. You know, listen, I'm in need of something to eat. But if they know that that person is cruel and cold-hearted, they're not gonna approach that person. So that's what Jesus meant. Nobody's gonna go to thorn bushes. If they're looking for figs. A good man brings good things out of the goodness stored in his heart. And an evil man brings evil things out of the evil stored up in his heart. For the mouth speaks what the heart is full of. So again. I know I'm guilty of it. Somebody hurts me, or somebody cuts me off when I'm driving, I defy myself. And I resent the person for doing that. Now we are being trained by Yeshua to refrain from that, because whatever you speak. Is reflecting what's in your heart. So to avoid um. Corrupting ourselves and 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 to avoid um. Bringing filth to our lives, we have to guard our mouths and say, God, I'm really hurt. I really want to say this. But I don't want to defile myself to honor your word. And that's how we become like little children. And now, as we go further down to a close, I again. Are we just gonna be li- um merely listeners to the word? Or we gonna up help ask God to? Have His Spirit apply the word to our lives? If we don't have our, if we do not set this faith on the foundation of Christ Jesus, it's gonna fall apart. Because let me tell you, that God does allow the enemy. To tempt us, and we see that mirrored in Jesus's life, the Holy Spirit led him to the wilderness to be tempted. So when we are this house, and if this house is not built on the rock, Yahshua, Hamashiach, we're gonna fall apart. These trials are gonna expose us, and it's gonna um show that Yeshua is not in us if we fall apart. But if we are in Yeshua, we're gonna do what He says, and we are going to be standing firm no matter what. The trials may be. No weapons formed against us shall prosper. So Jesus says, why do you call me Lord, Lord, and do not do what I say? As for everyone who comes to me and hears my words and puts them into practice, I will know, I will show you what they are like. They're like a man building a house who dug down deep and laid the foundation on rock. When a flood came, the torrent struck that house, but could not shake it because it was well-built. But the one who hears my words and does not put them into practice is like a man who built a house on the ground without foundation. The moment the torrent struck the house, it collapsed and its destruction was complete. If we put our house on. The opinions of this modern day culture, oh, love the um, lo- love the homosexuals, or um, you know what? We shouldn't be scolding our children. We can't do that. We gotta compromise with them and be fair to them so they can. No longer pout when we discipline them. That's sand, and that's not the foundation that Christ is talking about. We go to James chapter one, verse twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-five. And it says again. We cannot be just mere listeners of the word. Why? Because we will fall apart when the trials come. James chapter one, verse twenty-two through twenty-five, there it is written. Do not merely listen to the word, and so deceive yourselves. Do what it says. Anyone who listens to the word but does not do what it says is like someone who looks at his face in an mirror. And after looking at himself, goes away, immediately forgetting what he looks like. But whoever looks intently into the perfect law that gives freedom and continues in it, not forgetting what they have heard. But doing it, they will be blessed in what they do. It's a process. Come and be transparent to God. I don't feel like a forgiveness person. They really hurt me. And why should they deserve my forgiveness? They're not changing. But do what God says. God will always give a beautiful end. To your life if you just walk in obedience. And I'll say it further. You, not by might, nor by power, but by His Spirit. That's why. I will always drive this home. You need to be born again. Your flesh, your filthy rags, you may forgive somebody for a season or two, but then the grudges come back. You need the Holy Spirit to forgive somebody. You need the Holy Spirit to bear good fruit. Without Him, you cannot do anything. And you know, I wasn't gonna touch on this, but that's why Jesus said to his disciples. You must abide in Me. Without Me, you cannot bear any good fruit. I don't care who you are. You could be Gandhi. You could be President Jimmy Carter. You could be Martin Luther King. If you wanna have Jesus Christ, you cannot bear fruit. And it is written. I'm the true vine, and my Father is the husband. He cuts off every branch in me that bears no fruit. While every branch that does bear fruit, he prunes, so that it will be even more fruitful. You are already clean because of the word I have spoken to you. Remain in Me as I also remain in you. No branch can bear fruit by itself. It must remain in the vine. Neither can you bear fruit unless you remain in Me. I'm the vine, you are the branches. If you remain in Me and I in you, you will bear much fruit. Apart from Me, you can do nothing. We can't forgive anybody if we are not abiding in Christ. We cannot do good things. Or help people if we do not abide in Christ. Remember what John the Baptist said. In Luke chapter three. Says, the axor at the roots, anybody who's not bearing fruit, anybody who's not connected to God, anybody who's not born again. Is gonna be taken up, bundled up, and cast into the fiery furnace. That's better known as the last day. I urge anybody. To seek. His face. The more you see that you're seeking Yeshua, it is really Him seeking you. If you call to Yeshua, if you call to Abba. The Father of the the Lord of heaven and earth, the more you see that you're crying out to Him, He's really crying out to you. You remember that Jesus always used these parable um parables to describe. A deeper meaning. He leaves a ninety-nine sheep and looks for that one lost one. And when he's looking for that law, that that lost one, and that's the one that anybody doesn't really think too highly of. And is lost. But I encourage everyone, myself, Chief, keep crying out to God. Ask Him to help you bear good fruit when you don't feel like it. Lord. I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't feel like praying to you. I am exhausted. Well, give me the strength to pray to you. You see, we we are sharing in the the, we are sharing in the sufferings of Christ, because we even see that in Psalm sixty-nine. Where he says, the psalmist says that he is exhausted from calling out to God. Listen to this. This is Psalm sixty-nine, verse three. I'm worn out calling for help. My throat is parched. My eyes fail looking for my God. So don't feel guilty. We all get exhausted. We all get exhausted from worshiping God. We all get exhausted from doing kind things to people. Because we always face the fact that they're just merely using us, taking advantage of us, spitefully using us. But thanks be to God, we need to abide in Jesus to give us the strength. To endure loving these people, because as it is written. The hearts of most will turn cold because of the multiplied wickedness. But those who stand firm until the end will be saved. And you know, people say, man, that's that's kind of impossible. How, who then can be saved? And I and I always encourage everybody, you need to read the Bible on your own. You need to ask the Holy Spirit to guide you in all this um the scriptures, because it is written here. In first Corinthians chapter one, verse eight. And I I I want, I I'm just trying to show you, you can't just hold on to one scripture and then leave the rest at bay. See, it's written here. He will also keep you firm to the end. So that she will be blameless on the day of our Lord Jesus Christ. So He will help you remain loving people who are unlovable. Or nasty, He's gonna help you endure loving them, no matter what they do. They might strike you in one cheek and you give them the other cheek. He will vindicate you. And we have to entrust that all things work together for the good of those who love Him. And who are called according to His purpose. Jesus even struggled with that. Take this cup from me. But not my will, but your will be done three times. Struggling with the flesh, flesh did not want to die shameful death, did not want to get. The beard plucked out, did not want to have people spinning and mocking him and striking him. And stripping him of his clothes and rolling dice to see who's gonna get his uh, eh eh, this article of his clothes or what have you. But thanks be to God, Jesus did the will of the Father to save both you and me. Okay, let's go to Luke chapter seven, and uh, Luke chapter seven. It's pretty much straightforward. And uh, I'll I'll read it through to you. And and it shows the beauty of faith. And then uh, we we see um, all, just to give you a little preview, you see Jesus in the John the Baptist, he's describing. Um, about John the Baptist, but really, I want to drive home again, love. We cannot say that we love God if we don't love people that we see here. And the only way we know God is by loving. If we do not love our brothers, if we do not walk in love, we do not know God, because God is love. So I'm gonna get to that, I I believe that's in first John, chapter four, where it talks about God being love. And and uh, again, Jesus said to his disciples and all of us, you can do nothing without Me. If you do not abide in Me. Obviously, the Father, who is the husband, will cut you off from the vine. So we have to really, really focus on. Loving one another, but most of all, loving God. We need to love God. Okay, but um. I'll say this, that uh. You know, it's kind of late right now, so we can probably postpone this. But um, if you can, in your own personal time, just look at uh, Luke chapter seven and be prepared. And uh, read it for yourself, but it it really drives home about love, loving one another, and um. I believe that once we see that we love more and more, we realize that Yeshua is inside of our hearts. So that's the main goal. We need to find out that. Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit reside in our hearts already. So if there are any questions or any comments, please feel free to come to the table. And uh, whatever we can do to answer any inquiries, feel free, please.
Okay, beloved ones, if no one have any questions, comments, or concerns. We would like to thank you for your participation in tonight's study. Um, just uh, a couple of brief highlights. Um, as Brother Lyndon said. Showing up for study, not so much for showing up for study, but in our daily activities and. As we go about in our walk with Christ, it's not an easy one, is. Lyndon just shared with us beautifully what's found in Psalms. How David said, and this, and David was called a man after God's own heart. The more importantly, our Lyndon brought out. How even our Lord said, Father, if it be possible, pass this, pass this cup from me. Now, we're talking about Jesus. We just read. That he was, not was, but he's God's approved, his beloved. The one that God placed above all else. And even our Lord asked to have. Um. A a a task or a a goal from God to Him, to pass by Him. So beloved brethren, please do not fret. Brother Lyndon and I, we actually spent a week, and I just want to put this out there. Beloved brethren, if you're going through struggles, man, I don't feel like praying, I don't feel like Bible study, I don't feel like, I just don't feel like it. Call Brother Lyndon and I. Brother Lyndon and I are not aloof to these feelings, to these thoughts, to these desires, to these emotions. We are very much experiencing, like we read in Luke chapter four last week. Jesus was filled with the Holy Spirit, yet he went into the wilderness to be tempted forty days of the devil. Beloved brethren, don't you think that we as the Lord's creation go through these spells, these times, these these? There, you you know, these these, these beautiful godly pastors, um, they they they've now gone on to their reward. But they've said. It's okay to be tired in the work, but please do not be tired of the work. I just finished um, work. I've been at work since uh, eleven this morning. So I went straight from work to Bible study. I'm tired. I'm physically tired. Now, do you think I'm tired of my job? Do you think I'm gonna call in the morning, God forbid, and say I quit? No, I'm gonna get some rest, get something to eat, get some sleep, and be ready to go back at it tomorrow. So sometimes, beloved, if you feel like, bro, you look like Brother Lyndon said, I don't feel like doing this God thing. I'm not, I don't feel like doing it, y'all. I don't want to do it. Go to the Father, like Lyndon said, and tell the Father. Go to the Father, like Lyndon said, and tell the Father. Do like our Lord did. Lord, if it be possible, pass this cup from me. And trust me, he'll revitalize you. It'll be like you got a shot of a turbo or would would supercharge an afterburner. And believe you me, your zeal and your walk with God would be even more special, more pronounced. Than it was while you were tired or before. So beloved brethren, um the additional emphasis is Jesus. Beloved, after all is said and done. And I don't even want to put it in the aftermath. Let me put it in the beginning. As all is being said and done, walk in our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. I see Sister Samina, um is that your husband, sister?
Yes, brother. My husband.
How are you doing, brother?
Fine.
Welcome, beloved brethren. This is our sister Samina and her husband. And once again, these are our brothers and sisters from Pakistan. May God bless y'all and and watch over y'all. Thank you for being in Bible study tonight, and I pray that it's really been beneficial and helpful to you all. And we welcome you to come back each weekend. And as brother Lyndon was saying, as you go throughout your week, please continue your personal studies with God. Welcome once again, brother and sister Samina.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother Lyndon. Brother, please, um I request again. Some people need for you, your sport and and your prayer. So please, uh brother Lyndon and whether you please.